Hey, we'd like to welcome all those out to the Pleasant View Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order them. We'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And an opening prayer reading or expression of thought we've asked Commissioner Callow to lead us in that.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful this evening to the opportunity to gather here in this beautiful city. So thankful, Father, for the freedoms that we enjoy, the pledge that we just gave, the opportunity to to be as a, as a community and and the freedoms that we enjoy. We're especially grateful for uh, the, the rights and the opportunities of uh, the citizens of Pleasant View to uh, to come and to, to share and to request and, and all other processes through the city. So thankful for the leadership within the city and all that is done to help strengthen and beautify our, our community. Grateful again for this land, grateful for, again, this opportunity to express our our right to citizens and to review as, as a mission board that we may uh, come to the decisions that, that are appropriate, we pray, and we pray that we be guided, directed as we do. So give me thanks again for all that we have in this beautiful area. Take these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Chad. Um, first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody for joining us tonight. Um, and thank you for all the commissioners to show up tonight to help carry out the duty for this city. We'd like to start out with the Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. All the commissioners have had a chance to review the agenda. Is there anyone that needs to declare any conflicts of interest for this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to agenda item number two. We have the minutes and we have reviewer consideration of the planning commission meeting minutes. Prepared for our October third, twenty-four, February sixth, twenty-five, and March sixth, twenty-five. We've all had those for the week to review. Have there been any changes that have not been sent in that need to be discussed tonight?
The only changes we've received were from Commissioner Wilkinson, and those have been changed, not on this draft, but
Okay. Any other items on that? Otherwise, uh, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Sean's made a motion to, uh, move to accept. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes will be recorded. Our next item, number two, also number twos, as administrative items. Uh, two A is to vacate public utility easement. Consideration to vacate a public utility easement for the property located at thirty-five eighty-one North, five hundred West. We'll go ahead and turn the time over to Tammy for a presentation, please.
Okay, um, as you stated, this is an application to vacate a public easement at the address just up here on five hundred West. Um, it is a residential home and the petitioner has gone through and contacted all the public utility groups that that we have on our required list and has gotten releases, letters of release from each of those. I would recommend that you perform with that.
Hey, any questions for the staff on the item? There's a petitioner here tonight. Is there anything that needs to be added? That you would like to add? Any questions from the commission? Any discussion items? If not, we'll take a motion.
I'll motion to approve as presented by staff to, uh, vacate the public utility easement for the property located at thirty-five eighty-one North, five hundred West.
Uh, Dean's made a motion to, uh, accept or to approve. We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have, uh, Jeff has a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, that was easier. It took a lot longer to get all those papers signed. We, we're well aware that that's a, a good, healthy list. Appreciate you showing up tonight for us. Well, thank you. Our next item is a site plan, uh, commercial consideration of a site plan for a permitted temporary commercial use located approximately twenty-three sixty-seven North Highway eighty-nine. Last staff to present the findings on this and
Hey, thanks. So the planning commission will discuss and consider a site plan proposal for a temporary commercial business. It's located on Highway eighty-nine at about twenty-three sixty-seven North. Um, this is a vacant lot that was, um, previously had businesses on it, but is now vacant. And the petitioner is asking for a temporary seasonal life, business license, um, to run a landscape materials business at that location. Um, they have been, uh, successful in getting UDOT access approval for, I believe, a write-in, write-out at that location. Um, they've gone through, it's been a long time coming for them. So, um, they've met all the conditions and the requirements that we've asked of them through the, uh, for our DRC group with the engineering input and everything. They've, they've met all that for the, for their site plan. So staff recommends approval for this, of the site plan for the permitted temporary business.
Could you pull up the picture or go to the next slide for the picture? And are there any questions for the staff? We get the petitioner to come up, say your name and for the record. Name and address. Rex, what appear thirty-three seventy-three North, seven hundred West. Okay, thank you. Um, Mike, first of all, I guess I should ask, do you have anything you would like to add what was presented at this time?
You did a great job.
Um, my only question, um, and this is kind of for staff first and then it would come back here, but if, if we're looking at the major picture, oh, this isn't, that was showing on there. There we go. This, the drawing shows right over the top of the other building. Do we have, there's not an issue with if we're looking at the one that was provided to us, right? It, it shows that corner spot going over the top of the, the building next adjacent.
When I bought the property, there is a pin marker, uh, that shows that at one time, uh, the property was moved, uh, via transmission shop or whatever it is now, was moved to the west.
So So I, I just don't know if we have an issue that we need to have that reviewed before we move forward with the property. Et cetera. And then my next question is the UDOT. I know this property came before us. And I'm trying to remember how many years ago that it was brought before us. On the drawings that we have here, it's showing one giant opening. Are you guys, when it was brought before us for a different purpose that had to, uh, UDOT?
It, it still does.
Yeah.
So the, the north property has a, a double adjoining. And if you see that black line, pretty well represents now the property line to the north. But you, you can see where he did the slurry.
Yep.
So we share the, that north property, and then there's still the asphalt on the south.
Okay. So
Which you don't recognize.
Which our drawing shows a little bit. Uh, the one she had there, it almost made it look like it was one giant.
There's a, there's a double shared and then there is a, a south driveway.
Okay, so
That, that is, that wasn't existing when I bought the place and ripped.
Okay, so that's why I was just looking at this. It makes it look like the entire thing was an in and out.
No, no, yeah, you got a double shared on that where you're, there it is, yeah, and then you've got another one right there. Yeah.
Okay. I like it right in, right out. So better than
UDOT did too.
Better than what was proposed last time, and I'm surprised they got it through UDOT. So that's why I'm just curious. What was a big hangup on that property at that time?
I invested hundreds of thousands of prop, of money into this property to this point.
Uh, any other questions to, um, the petitioner?
So with it being seasonal, just um, just, uh, will be occupied during the summertime, but in the winter it will remain just kind of vacant?
Probably, yeah, more unlikely just because it's, I mean, it's, it's bark.
Right.
And stuff like that, yeah, obviously.
Just wondering if there was like storage of vehicles and that kind of thing that
No.
Okay.
No, it's taken me a lot to get all the vehicles out.
Oh, yeah, I say, I like it.
I don't.
Clean it up. It's looking good.
Yeah.
Done?
Yeah, just when we're saying temporary, is this recurring year after year, but just for a certain period of time or?
They would have to apply for the temporary license each year.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no, sorry, Jeff, there's, um, there will be no employees on site.
Correct.
There's no structures other than concrete bins to hold the material.
I would like to put a trailer, like an office trailer there or something there.
Hmm, doesn't that violate? You can't do that.
Or some kind of, you know, nothing permanent, nothing on the whole lot is permanent at all.
I don't think you can do an office of temporary office trailer.
Of a, of a shed type building and, but we hadn't discussed anything about an office trailer.
Well, I, I, I'm a little confused there because I thought I was gonna put like one of those drop-down little sheds there.
Right.
But then they didn't want that, but then they said, well, you could put trailer on wheels there. So I was like, that's the direction I was gonna go because of that direction I was pointing in the, in the other meeting.
Okay, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember that we discussed that possible, but I don't remember that.
Okay.
So all of the cubicles for all of your bark, is that just the concrete blocks?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not foreign footing some foundation?
No, it's, it's, it's gonna be blocks written set up.
All road base in and out, or are you paving it?
Uh, there would be some asphalt where the, where the bins sit. That's it, because the rest of it is, is gonna be the dirt and the road base, which is there now.
Okay.
And since I've done the improvements, it's not retaining water.
Cool.
Any other questions, thoughts? Nope. My only discussion point is I believe we would want to I would like to see conditions that staff or the DRC look at temporary offices. I know in several of our ordinances that is not allowed. I mean, we've had some thirty-day type of things while there's construction going on, but not permanent temporary
Right.
trailer structures that are allowed in these areas. So that would be one I would suggest that we make as a conditional that it's, that we pass it based on the condition that staff reviews if that's allowed or not before the permit's allowed. So any other thoughts, Jeff?
Would that, would, would the office fall under the building or the the, the business license rather than the site plan approval?
Um, I'm not sure. Look at it.
I believe it does, Jim.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we start a site plan goes, it probably, you know, seems to fit work, but I think as far as the
But if we're putting an office in there, then that's changes the site plan, right?
Why, why?
What's that?
I just, yeah, if it's a trailer, I wouldn't think that that would
But, but we have people that put temporary trailers as offices that become permanent. That's why it's in the ordinance. I believe it's not. Is that what, maybe I misunderstood you.
Well, I guess I'm going down this road as, as Jeff is going, that it would be part of the, the business license. It would be part of the licensing. I, I don't know. Maybe I'm speaking in an area I don't know. We should just
So how can we make that a, an action item that's, at least that we can have the staff review it right before the business license is provided to work? Okay. Would that work?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good catch. Um, hey, thank you. Uh, any other discussion items?
Is that, is that acceptable? And does that, does that work for him?
Well, obviously, you know, we're losing thousands of dollars a day.
Right.
I mean, this is the season being open and, you know, I've kind of put a halt on everything because I didn't want to step on any toes, but the sooner we get something going, it's gonna be, you know, the better.
And that's why I'd, I'd rather rec, if someone's recommending approval, move it along with the condition.
Right.
You don't have to come back here next month again. You can just work with the staff and
Okay.
And determine what are the actual regulations.
Okay.
Does that?
That's fine.
That's why we're trying to keep it moving for you, so we don't pull it up. So, and then, then if it is that it's something else that has to be reviewed, then it can come back to us and maybe within two weeks when we meet again. It's coming quick. Okay, do we have a motion?
Put anything on there right now or do anything if I can start doing what I want to do.
Yeah, that's why I say they can do a quick review of it. I don't think that should take very long.
Okay.
For a quick, that's why we're allowing them to move it forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
If they pass, well, I'm listening for a motion.
You gotta release him first.
Oh, you, you can go back there.
Yeah, if you don't have anything else.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
We won't talk.
Uh, I'll motion to approve the site plan for temporary commercial use located at twenty-three sixty-seven North Highway eighty-nine. Um, with the recommendation or condition that staff review any type of temporary office space and make sure that that remains inside of the city ordinances.
We have a motion on the table to approve with the conditional review. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by, uh, Commissioner Gauzer. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. That helps. Okay, let's go ahead and we will move on to the next item. Uh, we're now in the legislative items. Um, so we are a recommendation body for the city council. We will open public hearings. Our first one is consideration of the general plan amendment to modify the future land use map and the designation of approximately point two nine acres of land located at six twenty-four West Fox Meadow Drive from planned commercial to mixed density residential. We'll head and turn the time over to staff to, uh, present at this time.
Okay. So this is a proposal that has been brought forward, um, to for a general plan amendment to change the the density or the designation of property that was mentioned, six twenty-four Fox, uh, West Fox Meadows Drive. Um, currently, the, the property is zoned CP one, so commercial. Um, the petitioner has asked for that to be rezoned to our, uh, medium density, re, medium residential density. Um, and this is kind of a two-part
Yeah, but, but we're gonna go with Tammy and I had already discussed, and maybe for the record, we're going to ask staff to go ahead and present on three B, which is the rezone from CP one to LSFR. And I'll go ahead and read it. Consideration of a rezone for approximately point two nine acres of land located at six twenty-four West Fox Meadow Drive from planned commercial CP one to medium density residential LSFR or limited single-family residential. Um, these two are tied together, so we're gonna ask staff to go ahead and present both of them at once. Then we will address them one at a time. If one passes, we'll move to two, but if one doesn't, then we'll move on from there. We won't need to. So thank you. Sorry to interrupt that.
I appreciate that. So, yeah, this is the two-part, um, application or two applications presented together. The first being the general plan amendment to change the zoning des- designation from commercial to residential. Um, as was mentioned, it's currently CP one. And the petitioner has asked for the medium residential density on, with the general plan to potentially rezone that to the li- limited single-family residential. Um, the lot that we are looking at is right at the end, the east end of Fox Meadow Drive where historically that area was meant to be commercial and was rezoned mainly to, to residential, but the two end lots were kept commercial. That was as part of a, um, development agreement that was put in place when the subdivision went in. Um, so approximately one point five five nine acre of property was remain designated for commercial. And that's with the two lots, um, on the north and south and, uh, or sides of Fox Meadow. Um, the develop, uh, great, development agreement states that the agreement runs with the land and would be binding on the owner and all future successors and signees of the owner in any portion of the subject property. Um, it also states that amendments could be done through the city council. Um, and owner agreeing that any amendment to the development agreement, including all exhibits shall be made by the following procedures, known as required for an amendment to a city, city land use ordinance as required by the city ordinance. Um, the ownership transferred to the HOA, I believe, back in last year, two thousand and twenty-four? Okay, so the ownership of the north lot was transferred to the HOA. They are proposing this change so that they can apply the new limited single-family residential zone and sell that as another buildable lot. It does meet the size requirements for a buildable lot in that zone. Um, the density, so it would be a change for the general plan to meet the density and the, and the use of the zone.
My answer said, yeah, is it, so it's just the north?
It's just the north, that little piece. Yeah, the, the southern side is still owned by Tritora, and so it's still remaining commercial.
Do you have this on a map you could pull up?
So this is the, the lot that the HOA owns, and then this is the the, the lot that Tritora still owns and would remain commercial. And there's not really a lot of space to do anything commercial with this northern piece. But it would have to switch to, sort of have the change in the general plan.
I believe when we, back when we approved that, that northern piece was assumed to be necessar- necessary to provide parking for the commercial piece across the street. So if there were to put a restaurant or something like that where you would require a larger volume parking, then those two pieces would actually complement one another and work together. I don't believe that that was intended to be residential for a reason. And the, I believe that the curvy line, the reason why it curves going into the cul-de-sac was the required setbacks from UDOT or whatever from the corner. That's why it has that curve instead of being more cement. But that's going way back.
Yeah.
Yeah, and way back before my time.
I'm gonna hold my discussion because I have some, some other thoughts on that. Are there any questions from the staff? Thank you, staff, for the presentation. Any questions?
Question. So in reading the development agreement, it did mention with, in section three point one, the zoning designation said the one point five five nine acres described by exhibit E shall remain in the existing RE twenty zone district until amended by a future land use application and action by the city council. So at some point, when, when this was done and uh, it was still zoned RE twenty, at some point, they rezoned it to commercial. The city did. Or, so that was not a, a request by the property owner? Because it, it, the development agreement says at some point then, uh, in the future, they will request, when the time's right, I guess, that it will be rezoned to commercial. So do you know when that happened and why now it's, it's jumping back? I just want to know what the timeframe was between those two uses.
My head when that, when that change happened.
Okay. That
This let's, yeah, when we open up for a public, we, we will open that. Um, I have some thoughts on that.
Okay.
Thought there. Let's go ahead and ask for the petitioner to come up and, um, state name and address at the time, and then anything else you would like to add?
Paul Pitcher, seven forty-three West Fox Meadows Drive.
Okay. Questions for the petitioner? Is there anything else you would like to add or some of the backstory or some?
Uh, our, uh, our desire as a HOA is to uh, have something there that cleans it up so that it looks nice. It'll provide income from, to the city. A resident will, uh, monthly, uh, be paying into the city coffers and, and it'll clean it up so that it looks like it belongs to the community. Currently, it's a, a wheat patch and that's been a heartburn for a long time. Uh, due to the configuration, the shape of that piece, uh, is twelve thousand four hundred and some odd square feet. Well, yeah, but you're not gonna do anything on that narrow neck that points to the east. Other, we've covered it with rock. And a home will fit there, uh, within guidelines of the city setbacks and so forth. It will fit. And it will be similar, uh, would be similar to the homes that are in Fox Meadows to the west. So that's our desires to, to make it presentable and, uh, compatible with what exists there in Fox Meadows now.
Good questions for the petitioner.
Yeah, I guess one of the questions, it kind of goes to that piece that goes out to the east. So it will will it be the responsibility of the HOA for the, the homeowner? Um, if this was approved, to take care of all that land out to the, the point?
Yes, the, uh, whoever would purchase the piece would have that entire, even the narrow neck, which is all covered with river rock. So it's like, no water, no maintenance.
Yeah.
Uh, it's goes to just the west side of the cluster mailbox.
Okay.
And from that point, west could be finished landscape-wise and whatever. But the homeowner would become responsible.
Any other questions?
I have just a quick question. So originally, those two pieces were owned by the same entity that now owns the lower. Is that correct?
By the developer, yes.
And then, just, I guess out of curiosity, did they then transfer the ownership of the upper portion like?
Yes, they, 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 uh, did a quick claim deed, uh, giving us ownership of that piece. And, uh, uh, our piece, lot twenty-one, which it is, was zoned CP one. Lot twenty-two, which is on the south side, is CP two. A little different classification or a little broader thing, but, but it is limited. Uh, so we don't oppose it. In fact, we'd be thrilled to have something on lot twenty-two that would clean it up and make it finished. Right now, it's an eyesore and we're tired of it. So, anyway, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead. Uh, we have a motion. This will become a public hearing. Do we have a, uh, motion to open a public hearing?
A motion to open the public hearing.
Chad motion open. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody from the vast audience who'd like to come and address us with this?
Actually, going back to my emails for the, the, um, felt the agreement.
Hey, you want us, you want us to stall for a minute or, we can start? We can, we know we're gonna discuss, but we're gonna leave the public hearing open for just a minute until we have We can, we know we're going to discuss, but we're going to leave the public hearing open for just a minute until we have someone in the audience that might want to come up and talk for a minute. Um just as a reminder, this. Puzzles is for a general plan amendment, so we're not looking necessarily what might take place on there, but the reason and. Um there was a few of us that probably were on when this. What became a very uh. Touchy subject with a lot of people on the commission, on the council, uh citizens in the area. And the the biggest heartburn, I think, that was brought up was the entire area, that whole subdivision. Was supposed to be left as commercial as along all twenty seven hundred. And so just as a little background and history for some of the people. That became a very. Touchy subject that we were giving up our corridor, a commercial corridor. To create more residential because it was supposed to be a preserved corridor on the general plan. So, one of the. Agreements or one of the things that kind of compromised or came out of it was we didn't want to give up our, you know, we've got a stoplight here. And we're basically, or the potential of a stoplight here. To give up this corridor for potentially for pieces of commercial. And so, one of the things was if we give up this much space for a commercial. It was a big push by the planning commission to say, let's leave uh here for a commercial development. There was a big question on the S curve, if I remember right, and you bring that up. I can't remember if it was that you got me or not. So you remember that and I I wouldn't have remembered that. The question was. You know, can we do anything commercial here? They said, yes, there could be something small commercial here, which would allow. Uh a larger thing, whether it's a smaller. Dentist office, medical office, a small, some type of thing. It could be done there. I forgot about the parking issue, but. I think now that you said that, it reminded me depending on what they put here in this corner, it could allow for that off look. So that's why there was a big push for at least let's keep our uh our. Commercial corner. So uh one of the other things was this was a third party. Well, this was all one ownership and this was a separate ownership right here. Yeah, still separate one. And then the talk was, well, if they develop peers, they'll say, well, eventually they'll all work together if they really want to get something to happen. Are you ready to come talk? Please, please come. We gotta do it right. I say, come.
Can I, well, she's coming up. Can I just ask a quick question? So the UDOT question, so. To gain access to that, if something were built on it, they would have to come in on that curve.
So, so real quick, I don't, I personally don't remember the UDOT. Um conversation or the parking lot, but I do know one of the reasons why they made it go up. To the S curve is to make that parcel bigger. That's that's really why the conversation, but. That that was a very controversial situation, uh you know, let's be, we have a patio home zone now, we didn't then. And so, we, the the room was filled, nobody wanted it, but it's turned out to be a really nice filament, all of that, but. That was to remain commercial. That was Bruce Parker and um. Mark Miller, Bruce Parker were partners with my country. So that was Tritora West. And they came in and asked a concession, and this was when Toby was mayor and all of that, that said, hey. Would you feel better about this if we made the corner commercial? And some people felt okay with it or whatever, but it eventually it passed, but that was in the development agreement that they would have a development agreement. And keep that corner commercial. The top portion, I think that was just. There was no way to make the development work. Unless you went up and down like that. And so it was kind of a leftover thing. I I honestly don't remember.
And I think that. We questioned that whether he came like that. They said, you, and I think maybe you're something to, we could possibly put something bigger here. Something smaller here and they were adamant.
But I don't remember much about this. It was more about the lower portion.
I just remember we were leaving that whole square and that was how they decided to divide the road up.
To go to Paul's point, he is right. There's not a lot that could go there, but I honestly, I'm not saying, I don't remember the conversation about. Parking. And UDOTs. And I was looking for, and I found a lot of the planning commission agendas. Still looking.
I have a question of dates. What 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 what's the timeline? When did? So it's been. We're talking for.
Look at his picture. I don't know.
Nine years, ten years, almost. Nine years.
Development agreement was signed in twenty seventeen.
Okay, any anyone else from the audience that would like to address? Okay, here we know other comments. We have motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion second.
Oh, second.
Second by Chad. All in favor, say aye. Okay, we're now closed public hearing. This, my thought, my recollection and this was very heated. I remember what the vote came down to. It was very. Planning commission was very adamantly against this because we spent so much time on the general plan to get commercial along that whole corridor. I think this was. A concession that they went ahead and said, oh, at least if you give us the corner lot. We'll wait and see what develops in there. We all know the economy and everything slowed down and the developments slowed down, but the whole idea on that corridor was. If you burn it all up with house tops. We will have a corridor when you want to come develop and so. Um I think there was a lot of heartburn on all the work that had taken place. So there again, I think that concession was. Was a good one. We, you know, eventually the commercial will come along that that area. We would have to dig into it. If we needed to dig into it more, we could find out more. As about it, but. Um that's kind of the history of it. Thoughts, discussions, items?
I guess I'll I'll start with going back to my my statement about time. So it's been nine years and there's been. There's been zero, I don't, I don't know. Has there been any interest as commercially? There has been approaches to the city denied or?
However, I noticed now where the cells for cells.
Oh, really?
The 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 southern portion. But is that, but is that back to, I guess my question would be, is that back to the city's responsibility? I mean, if if the master plan or the general plan is, hey, we want to have commercial in there. Just because there's a time limit, you know, the economy doesn't warrant it at this point, doesn't mean we should change the general plan.
But the the city hasn't received any anything from the developer to develop this. Nine years, okay.
So that's, that's my question. This stayed RE twenty when the development agreement was approved, but at some point it was rezoned CP one. That had to be an application. By the developer to to rezone it to commercial. Three years ago?
I think it was around.
Okay, so that was a city action then? Okay. Yes. Yeah, I I was just wondering if that was a developer driven request or a, okay, that makes more sense to me then. Okay, and then one other thing, when. In attachment three, if you'll bring that up. The future land use map is a little bit strange because it shows two of the residential lots. In the commercial area and then it cuts off. The the pointy piece on the bottom and puts that in residential. When it's currently zoned commercial. So just a couple of thoughts there. I know that's not anything you did, but. I don't know if if we can amend that as part of this general plan amendment or anyway.
Which, the RE five had to be created for this. Right, so. Can I ask a general question? That relates to this piece as well as our item C. Later on, on page two of their application. In box at the bottom, you have medium density residential. Forty eight dwelling units per acre. Just asking for some clarification where that actually applies. Bottom of the page. Page two. Well, it it's actually belongs to both.
They're both uh proposing the same zoning.
I'm just curious where that medium density actually applies. Right, but on the page two there, it says medium density residential development is located along the west side of US eighty nine to the rail lines. South of twenty five fifty north and north of the city limits. That's a confusing statement to me. I don't know. And eventually they're going to ask for that LSFR that is part of your medium density residential. So does that mean it's technically not allowed in that area, the way that's written? Are we going to have to go back and amend that anyway?
I I don't think so. I think I think that. Well, that's not the code, though. That's the general plan. So this is just a description.
Oh, that's why we're saying it has to be up there. We're saying to change the general plan to allow it.
I think generally it says exactly what David you're referring to. This is where we think it should generally go. But if we decide to put this in a different place and it fits there, I we can do that.
That's what we're being asked is do we want to change the general plan to allow it, correct? It just seems confusing to be south of twenty five fifty north. While at the same time being north of the city limits, which city limit would they be referring to that? It's a little bit confusing.
I think that maybe supposed to be a two or to the city limits.
I was, I was, I was almost thinking north. This sounded weird, but north of this. I think that's what it's supposed to say. But this piece wouldn't be south of twenty five fifty north. Well, I guess it would be actually. Anyway, just a little, a little confusing. No, yeah, it's north of twenty five. Yeah, that's why, anyway. Just trying to make sense of the description we have in there. Yeah, we need to, we need to clean that one up. Any other questions, thoughts? I mean, I'll keep my opinion if we're just to that point of giving opinions. I think we have a. City agreement in there. I'd like to see whatever development could take place from that. You know, I'd like to see a commercial lot of some type. Maybe it's two. People that are developing one, maybe it's one person that needs both to develop it, but I think that was the intent of the. Of the agreement with the city council at the time. So my personal thought is I wouldn't change the general plan because it matches the people on the other side. There is a stoplight there. It's, I mean, it's a corner that has the potential of. Of actually becoming something that the commercials own and that's what. You know, that's what everybody fought for from the city. You know, that was a. Lot of discussion that took place.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's just my my two bits, just having been through it, so.
Yeah, that wasn't a fun month. The reason why I am, I guess you'd say. For approving it is because along that north wall. Those residents that those last three lots there in the lime green color. They don't want any type of commercial in their backyards because of lights and traffic and all of that stuff. So that would be the reason why I would be for allowing it. The reason why I'm against allowing it. Is because it does reduce our chance of getting something in that may need it for parking in the future. And so. It's really a catch twenty two for me, like. I would like to see it stay the way that it is because it gives us the ability to put something. A little bit bigger on that lot if they needed both lots.
And they could always come in and change, change the road. I mean, we've been at it.
I don't think so. I think there's some problems with the deceleration lane for turning and all that stuff. I think that's why that's like that. Did you have something to say or? All right. I didn't know if I offended you or something. Having a panic attack or something because I said something wrong, so.
David, anything else?
I mean, I, when you're talking about. People not wanting that in that backyard, I mean, I, if I were to. Own and build on this little piece and then some big company went across the street for me, like. That to me seems even weirder to have. A house and then we've got. People coming in.
That's why I think that land is key just for expansion parking because, I mean, you're not going to put a drive through or something in that little parcel that's going to work.
No, but I I work in a place that there was a little tiny piece. Just as part of the bigger piece and they have like a first stand there. So sometimes there are little things that can go.
And if I remember right, we had people here that didn't want this. And we had people down here that really weren't too big on any of this. They were just hoping them to stay made. So I mean, we had, we had all kinds of people coming in. Petitioning at at that time. Jeff, any thoughts?
I I mean, my my thoughts were just like I'm on you. I had a house across the street from a, and it's probably going to be more something along the lines of a of a professional office building. So probably not a lot of traffic, but still could be a little bit awkward, I think, but.
But I mean, if it's a restaurant that is busier.
I mean, that's a small spot for a restaurant, but 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 I suppose.
You're you're saying six fifteen is a small spot?
Both spot, both of the small.
You're saying sixteen, six fifteen is too small.
I mean, there's always a potential they buy that lower portion.
One of the really cool concepts that I still think is cool today that we talked about, that I think would do, still would do good there. Is a food truck parking lot. So we pave it, we make the whole thing look nice, both sides, we are able to use use both sides for parking. And have the food trucks come in and have actual power that they could plug into. We charge them for the rent, we charge them for the power. And they can come and go and not have to run their generators and stuff. And we have kind of a mobile restaurant type of a theme on that corner. I thought that was an idea, a cool idea when this was presented. I still think it's a cool idea today. To give us some. Clean up the lot like the HOA is asking for, but to give us some flexibility with not having fixed. All night lights and stuff like the residents were worried about. In that area. But. I'm not set set up to be able to buy it and build that, so.
I do remember something like that, someone proposed. I just always remember we had a commissioner that would, every lot wanted a Dairy Queen, so. I do remember him suggesting. He always suggested.
Everything commercial had to be a dairy.
Any other comments, suggestions? If not, we're always open for a motion anytime we're ready.
I guess I.
Uh go ahead. I'm the petitioner.
Lot twenty two, which is a commercial lot. Uh that lots up to our residents now.
Which is, you're saying right here and right here. Which is, which is. Right, and and that's kind of, that's the the discussion and the point that we said was. This was all. General plan for uh commercial. We have these people that were coming in and saying, well, we don't want commercial, we want the houses. Which is always going to be, somebody has to know that, you know, it was going to be commercial. They built their houses knowing that that was part of the general plan. And then they're coming in after they built, say, well, we don't want that there, you know, so it's always going to be. Somebody somehow, right? I mean. This person moved in knowing that that was commercial. This person moved in knowing that was commercial. Because the commercial was zoned and the agreement was with the city council before someone built those homes. Before the whole subdivision went in, so. Well, some some of that's with the economy, right, I mean, the economy's been slow, so there's not a lot of property moving.
Forgive me, I haven't the county records, but the parcel right here, this long skinny parcel. Actually used to belong to this owner because twenty-seven hundred north cuts through on a diagonal, it's still the same owner. This piece has been sold?
No. Cause he, that owner actually came into our office yesterday.
Okay. So, go ahead. I'm just kind of thinking out loud. My recommendation or thought is. I would think that it would make more sense to wait and see if we were to get a veterinary clinic or something in this larger parcel. That's not going to need this, and we had a structure there that didn't. Make this necessary for parking or any expansion. Then it would make sense to go ahead and approve the small parcel and the separation at that time. But I think right now, I don't think it makes sense to do that where. They could be, it could be necessary in the future.
I was thinking that exact same thing, I think it is a little premature. To make this decision right now.
Yeah. And that property was quick claim to you. Cost? Ten dollars. So you got a park? So gifted parks are an eternal. Bill. I don't ever remember talking about parks. Parks are super, super expensive gifts. They're awesome, they're like cats.
Can I have one, one possibility, i- if you truly want a transitional. Structure there, wouldn't a duplex or triplex make more sense than a single family?
Yeah, it's a quarter acre, so we can't put a triplex on it.
Yeah, we we could do that with the ordinance that we have, so. Hey, if there's any other discussion items or we have a motion?
I'm, I wanna make one more comment, and it goes back to my my time period. And and I I remember when this went through, and I remember. The city, especially the people down here were. Were passionate about, you know, not having commercial right there. And so decisions were made, concessions were made. And what we have here is nine years later, we've got a piece of property. I'm not a commercial developer. But I I could never see myself putting anything at the head of a. Uh, a residential zone like this. I don't see that it is a draw for. Uh, a business, and I I don't know all the intricacies of why no one has developed here. And I I'll I'll reserve my opinion of what I believe really happened here. But I, in in my mind, nine years is a long time in in. And we've had, we've had some some pretty significant growth in the city, and yet nothing has happened here. And so. Uh, that will reflect in my vote.
You do have to keep in mind, it hasn't been for sale until this month.
I know, but that's not how developers go, I mean, if there's a, if there's a piece of land that is attractive. They're gonna go after that. And this is on a fifty-five year uh, or an older, you know, subdivision. I, yeah, I I'll I'll just leave my opinions out, but I'm I'm, yeah, yeah. We'll go from there.
Okay, do we have someone to make a motion?
Say it, Jeff.
Well, I mean, but to 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 just to to. Chad's point is, I know personally people that have called the tricar then they. Yeah, so that that being said, um, because they were looking at that spot, because it wasn't, it is a nice spot for some. Some good commercial, some small commercial and um, but.
And not and not to get specific, but they were looking at the the entire piece, they're looking at. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, my my only thoughts are is is I I kind of like what was been mentioned from Monia, and is that, is that. That I think that piece could become very valuable if the piece below it needs it, and then if they ultimately don't, then I guess the bill winner, if he does. Cause I think, I think if that goes residential now, I. It's gonna really, it could potentially really limit what goes on the other piece.
And and if I remember, the the funny thing is. We're not even just, no one's bought this either, Chad, for your point, because the economy dried up right after all this happened and. And people were extremely heated that we turned this from commercial because they wanted the whole corridor. And it's like, well, fine, well, once you give this up, then you give this up, but if we left this commercial. Then this will stay commercial, but if we let this in residential, we'll say, well, we're right next door to commer, you know, residential. I've heard of people wanting to come and put all homes or.
Yeah, there's been sign, there's been signs there, yeah.
Apartments, et cetera, but what. It's not zoned out, but they could come in and ask, is what I'm saying is, so we've got to be careful that we keep that corridor. And then, like I say, the hottest topic was the fact that we're right on a corner of a major thoroughfare. You know, there are others along that corridor that haven't sold yet either, but that was the. The whole discussion back then is if we give it up now, ten, twenty, thirty years from now, we won't have any, because it's all gonna be top, so understood. That's, that's just the history of, I mean, it was very heated up here, yeah, and sure, in here all all in general, so.
That's fun.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Which one are we voting on first, A or B?
Proposal one. Just the proposal for the general amendment.
We need to open a public hearing for CP.
Nope, just one, just. We're just doing one, only one thing at a time, that's why we had staff present, but we are only talking about the general plan.
And if A gets shot down, then B doesn't get discussed, because it's.
It's mute. I can't make more.
We we can go the hard way if you want me to go.
Make a motion, that's good.
Okay, I'll recommend that we deny the uh, general plan amendment. For the uh, um, twenty-nine acres of land, we have six twenty-four west, Fox Meadows Drive.
As it states with the general plan, this day the same. We have a motion to recommendation of the city council of the denial of the proposal, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the topic?
I would like to add that it's uh. Kind of a conditional denial based on what actually goes in on that parcel, that it's not in it. Forever, if something goes in that doesn't require that land across the street or needs that land, then we could definitely revisit it at that time.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay, nay.
Hey, we have Sean and Chad that have voted no, the others uh, for. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming tonight. Based on the. Discussion of item three A, we will now skip three to be. Three B with this discuss, but there's no need to make a recommendation. We will go to free C, a public hearing. A rezone from A two and RE twenty to A two and LSFR. Consideration of a rezone for six point three one acres of land located at approximately. Four seventy-five west Pleasant View Drive for agricultural circle, A two and very low density. RE twenty to agricultural A two and medium density residential LSFR. We'll turn the time over to staff to present, and that is a mouthful. And a little bit of a confusing, so hopefully they'll clarify itself.
It's interesting because the. The part that is currently A two. Is swapping with the other, the northern section of the property. To be eight. All right, scroll down. Okay. So this petition is before the planning commission for consideration to modify the current zoning designation. Of approximately six point three one acres of land at approximately four seventy-five west Pleasant View Drive. From agricultural A two and residential RE twenty to agricultural A two and residential LSFR. The zone change does align with the recent general plan amendment that was. Approved by city council on February eleventh of this year, twenty twenty-five. Modifying the density designation from low density residential to medium density residential and agricultural designation. Um, the zone change also would align with the new ling- limited single family residential zone. Um, that allows for smaller single family lots designed to provide a residential environment suitable for family living. By allowing the development of single family homes and patio homes with a focus on maintaining the cohesive and high quality neighborhood character. I've provided the city code for the new zone. And the. There were a couple. Public, public comments or uh, messages that I had received regarding this, and I've given those to each of you. Um, one was just clarification of what was being uh, proposed to go there. So we've had a little conversation back and forth just regarding how being, how many potential lot, what would be, what would be done with that? The lots that have been proposed. In the concept plan that the developer has provided. Meet the. Square footage requirements, the frontage requirements. A lot of that will be dealt with at subdivision, or that will all be dealt developed at subdivision. There was some question that was raised today regarding the. The concept plan, the latest concept plan that was brought forward with. Some rearrangement of lots that. Brought the west side up above where the designated boundary was for the. Different zones. And so that would need to be clarified, but other than, other than that, um, it does. According to staff's review, meet the requirements for the the new zone and the. General plan change that has just occurred. So staff would recommend approval of the zone. Um, with the adjustment of the. Location of the proposed lots at in the concept plan, which would be dealt with at subdivision. So. So here on your. Doing that. So the, the northern border of where the. The two zones change. The ordinance that was created for this was right here.
No, it was right through the middle of that swing.
Yeah, it was just a little bit to the.
Or right, right.
It matched your, your previous concept plan. And so that was, that was the boundary that was created in the ordinance.
So now we have to apply for an ordinance.
So you'd have to, if you wanted to put that other lot. The last lot on the north end there, it would have to have another uh, general plan amendment.
So, so.
Oh, yes, please.
So my comment, or my question is, what was, what was approved by city council is not that. It was, it was, uh, it was more down right by the. Right there by. Pool, so essentially there's a. And what hap- what's happened, it's pretty obvious from the concept plan that was presented to to. Planning commissions and city councils show sixty-foot runs.
This changed the meeting, the limited ceiling boundary was.
Correct.
Okay, so hold, hold on this minute, we'll have you come up.
But that zone, that square footage was approved right here, the legal description. That was approved showed right here. So the legal description now of ours includes more land. So, so that, I I think, I think what needs to happen personally is that this item needs to be tabled. And that the engineer needs to correct that, to me, was approved by city council to right here, which eliminates a lot, so. So, so, because, because these two, the, this plan is in conflict with what was approved by city council.
Right, and this is just a concept plan, so.
Correct, but the, but the, but the legal descriptions are are in conflict as well.
Right.
So, so Tammy, just real quick. Remind me, flipping the A two to the, so we're, did we just move the the bottom part?
As it currently is, A, the A two, the section that is A two is the bottom.
Right.
Half of the property and the upper is RE twenty.
So we just, we just, I'm just trying to remember what what it was on this one.
The northern portion be A two, A two and the lower portion to be there.
And then remind me with this, we in, I know once upon a time, the. The dead end street or the cul-de-sac street was five hundred, and I think we raised it to eight, it's six fifty now, so. Doesn't this extend past that, or if you blow that back out, so we could see, because how many?
It says it's four hundred and eighty-five feet.
But is that to the, is that the whole thing? Is it to, is it clear back to where this opening is down, or is it just to?
But he's asking if it includes a corner going to that.
So, so does it come from the corner of this road? Cause that's your next exit, so is this whole thing dead end, or is it from the start of the subdivision?
It's at the intersection.
So back, you're saying back here.
It can only be six hundredish feet from there.
There's no way.
Yeah, so we get, let's go ahead and have the petitioner come up, state your name and.
Motion to open for public hearing?
Well, we, we can, don't have to, but we can open.
Isn't it a public?
Yeah, but he can, he can come up and talk to you.
Oh, okay, sure.
Jeff Lee, thirty-two eighty north, eight fifty west, Pleasant View. Number one, I think Jeff Ballingbroke should have pulled himself out of this, recused himself, he made an offer on this property, he's got vested interest in it failing, he's fought it every step of the way. He sent misinformation out to the entire neighborhood, I love Jeff personally, but in this, I feel like he should recuse himself. He's been. He, he lives adjacent to it, but he's kind of made it his mission to kill this deal.
Okay.
And the, the initial fighting on it. Has already cost twenty thousand in interest because. While the neighbors all come out and fight a patio home. Zone, it's insane, it's insane. And I'm I'm shocked to hear this, does the city not give any notice when they're passing a zoning a change? So the reason that we made the adjustment. Because I'm giving up land that I didn't want. Because I'm giving up land that I didn't want to put into the zone. Is because instead of approving, you guys all recommended to decline the RE five, which is fine. So then we worked with the city to make the limited single family residential zone. Which we, which is there, but then it ate up more of the land. And so for me to make it work, I need the thirteen lots out of it. So we had to eat up more of the land and get those extra two lots to still have all the numbers penciled. So now, after we get it re, get this general plan amendment rezoned. Anyway, there, there's definitely misunderstanding on.
Do, do you see what the, there is a question on? There might be a, a legal definition we may have to follow. If we pass it and you're still short, you'll still have to come back and, and possibly redo it. So that's why I just. You, you're seeing, sounds like you were caught off guard potentially that that might have been adjusted to, so. We'll have to, we'll have to work that out, so.
I, I, yeah, I'm shocked where.
Can you answer for me that, cause I, you know, my numbers, my eyes are bad and I can't read all the numbers and the, um. I know eventually this is supposed to go through, but we still have, don't we have to have for the fire marshal has to prove the, the length of the.
If it's a cul-de-sac, but it's not a cul-de-sac, so it comes in. And because the ultimate plan is to take it all the way up to Pleasant View Drive, which doesn't have to happen now, it can happen anytime in the future. Which we've got dozens of those roads right now, the, the master plan is to carry a trip. It included the hammerhead, which meets the fire post that turn about, so there will be asphalt. All the way here. So the emergency vehicles can do their turns and get in and out of there.
What, one question, so from what was originally presented before we changed the zone. You, you have the same number of lots as you had before.
Yeah.
Okay, but the zoning increased the size of the lots, frontage, and so that's why we're stretching. Up further north. Okay.
Question for petitioner, I understand you sold the piece that actually connects to Pleasant View Drive.
Yes.
So you really have no control over this going through.
That's correct. Except they expect, express the interest. They're the ones that requested that we do it this way instead of a subdivision. Cause if we do a subdivision, it means they can't do a subdivision and they wouldn't be able to develop theirs the rest of the way. So they request that we leave it this way so that eventually we can connect it up through there and they can develop it also.
Leave it what way? You're saying just a flat stop?
So that it could go all the way through. Just because I want to farm it.
Changes his tax value as well.
You'll, you'll farm this or are you gonna make those into lots?
Only lots.
Okay.
Is gonna be.
Which means it's not planned to go connect for quite a while.
Not in the next twenty years.
Which I guess, and I have to go back, one of the questions I would ask, I wouldn't want to extend it, but I would want to know from staff was. Confirmable, uh, the six hundred and fifty feet, what is that? And then do we need anything special at the end of that? It would just need.
It's been discussed.
Tyson, Tyson's been in on.
Discussed repeatedly and this was already discussed and approved.
And we, we weren't a part of those, so I can't, I can't answer.
I mean, um, Chair, so if, if I add all those lots and then I kind of go out into the middle of the road, I don't know if that's where the measurement goes. And then I, I add again, I'm at five twenty-seven.
It, it doesn't matter. If you're, if the plan is not a subdivision that's ending, then that rule does not apply at all. Distance doesn't matter.
This, this happened behind my land, uh, my land, my lot of this. Grand land, should all come and see it sometime. But that was one of the things that came up. I think it was Nielsen Holmes was gonna put in behind us and because it was a development. Um, they had to put some kind of like complete like. Big fold at the end, you know, that they could turn trucks and stuff around and so. I'll stop talking.
And it used to be, like you said, five hundred feet, but I don't, I. I hear what he's saying and I, I can't even trigger that, I don't know that, so that would just be something that. I would want them to be looked at.
Did you make note that I've asked for Jeff Bowling broke to recuse himself and that I want that? That I made a formal request? I know, I know, sure, maybe, maybe not, but either way, the fact that you have historically.
Okay.
Had a financial.
You've made it noted, that's fine, that's fine. We're gonna, we're gonna keep this very. Upfront, there was a declaration of conflict of interest and he has no, no, no conflict of, of financial. Interest in this, he's, he's made it a little bit to this body before that. He lives in that area and so I think we're, we're all very well aware of it. Uh, but thank you for making that noted, but we will keep this, uh, professional. Other comments, questions?
I just got a question on what the process was in designating the area that go before planning commission, DRC, council.
Designating the boundary of the zone?
Designating the boundary.
Um, my understanding is it went off of, uh. Your previous flat or your previous.
Was that a city council, was it staff, was it, what's the process?
So.
To determine that?
The ordinance was written and presented to city council.
Okay. One of setbacks, it was, uh, cause what we're arguing is the border of the limited single family residential property.
Right.
So. What, what is the question?
His question is, where did we? Get the meets and bounds for the border where it changes from limited single family to the A two.
All I see is from, from where the adjacent zone to this zone.
So we're going back to scratch.
I, I would imagine that engineering, engineering and would work with the county and accessory records office, Sean. When you get a needs and bounds description, is that what you usually do?
So I, I don't know who prepared the description.
The legal description should have came from the survey.
Yeah, the county's not gonna, the county won't prepare the legal description. The county surveyor will review that if, you know, as part of a subdivision or something like that, but. Jeff's surveyor or someone should have given the city the definition or the, the description of the land that was to be rezoned. That's what should have been considered and approved.
When you sign your, I'm assuming when you design your concept, your surveyor, engineer, whether it gives you the description.
That's what I'm assuming. No, right, right, that's, that's, and I guess that's a good clarification. The city, I don't think the city prepared the legal description.
Yeah, we're not gonna go out and.
So you'd have to remove two lots to make it fit the way that it's currently written. Is that correct?
I think it's just the one lot, that one on the north end. Cause I went through and looked at the, the legal description that was in the ordinance and compared it with.
So one, one suggestion was made up here and it's been a little few minutes ago and I can throw this out, it was made of. Dewy table, cause I'm, I'm big into when things we've been challenged by several mayors is trying to keep the process moving, trying to help out developers or. You know, anybody making changes, we don't sit on things. One thing was to re-table it and knowing that we're going to be meeting in a couple of weeks again, does that allow? And I guess this is a process, I don't know what the process, is that a quick fix or if, if this, you're moving it from here to here? Or does that have to go to city council again? All you'd have to do is make that change here and then we could recommend the approval to city council if that's what we chose to do.
The general plan.
The, the general plan, all we're doing right now is changing.
That's there what happened, so it applied to the general plan amendment and apparently.
It went somewhere in here, in between these two lots.
And then we revised it.
I think we're gonna, it's.
Can I just agree to take that lot seven off? What?
revised based on what came out of the evidence.
My understanding, and I, and I don't want to be that person, but my understanding is that you have to go through the same process, you can't, I don't. Unless Sean can help me out here, Sean's. I would think that since it doesn't match what we approved, you, I don't think you guys can amend it or can be.
Well, so, so here, here's the thing, we're not approving this concept plan tonight. That, and I think that needs to be very clear, we're not approving the number of lots, we're not approving anything. This is a petition for a rezone. And as long as he complies with the, the actual boundary, we're fine. We, we can move forward with a rezone if we choose to. That's, that's correct. So if he comes in, if the reason gets approved tonight, he will come in with a subdivision application. That will be reviewed to show that it complies with the legal description that was approved as part of. The, the city council action. But if he doesn't, then. If it doesn't comply, then it will be denied. So he can move forward with that, I think at the same time as he's. Maybe going through the process to add another lot back in if he chooses to. Correct, we can't do that tonight.
So, so I guess maybe a little bit, if I'm hearing, I like, thank you for that clarification because. If we approved it, and I'm just making up, I don't have the numbers in front of me, if, if it split that lot. You'd have to pull two lots off, take that still to the city council, they'd still have to prove, that's not us, but the city council, no, if we approved it. The city council could still approve it, but you couldn't do anything with these until you came back for a general plan. He will have to come back for a general plan, right? So the question, the question is. Does it benefit him to have us table this until he goes through that process? Or to go ahead and approve this section? No, doesn't, there's no condition. No, 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 we approve what's before us.
Even all the legal description?
No, 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 no. That, all we're to do is, is we're only approving this.
The zone.
I was under impression from Tammy's email to me that, that the legal description was incorrect based on.
Yeah, but that will come.
Okay.
The rezone is for the property that he is in question. When he comes with his application for subdivision, just like what Sean said. They will review his concept and they'll say, that you'll have to take care of this portion in general.
Let, let me.
And, and then delete.
Let me make one other clarification though, Jeff, I, I see what you're saying now. Sorry, I, I missed that, so. Let me go back to the agenda.
Just so you know, his profession, he's the county development.
So. So this is a consideration to rezone six point three one acres of land. Okay, and part of that is A two, part of that is LSFR. Do we have actual descriptions that were submitted for this rezone? Do we know? If it, how, how much property is in each zone and where that line is?
Based on the general plan application amendment.
Okay, so that's all, that's what we're going off of, is the general plan amendment.
That's what I, that's what I had to go off of, was the ordinance that was done.
Okay, if that's, if that's the description, then what I said previously is, is okay, yes.
And, and so, one of my questions, we've got the general plan. And. Which is a, the city's preference on how to move forward with interviews, right? Yes, and. To rezone, cause the rezone application had this concept plan, right Tammy? So it's a different concept plan that was provided as. Okay, okay.
It has everything to do with intent on what we can do as a use.
Yeah.
The concept comes after, so, so, and just to, for clarification. Result, when you go to rezone a property, the process that we have done, the general plan cannot be completed. So if the general plan says, this is what the future land use allows, anyone rezone it, you have to make the general plan amendment first. That, that's the process that we have adopted in our city. And then the intent, to show the intention of what we allow, then you can, you know, apply for rezone.
Hey, so Sean, help me out because I thought I followed you to the last part, I just want to make sure. Because we came back full circle, if we, if we pass this tonight. We, do we need to have a better description of what's, where, what is, or are we just saying that six point whatever acres are being?
What, what we are rezoning is based on the ord- the reason, the. The ordinance that the city council approved.
Right.
So as long as, as that is what was noticed and that's what we're talking about, we're good. But.
Right, right.
Yeah, if.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
This is my learning part, and then I'll keep doing this, all I've learned.
I guess if the only thing that I would question is if the applicant had submitted something different, because he, he can certainly request a rezone. That differs from what was approved previously.
Right.
Then there's a little bit of a discrepancy.
And how do we know that then?
Well, that, that's, that's the question I asked to Tammy. Tammy is moving forward saying the application is based on the general plan amendment, is, that's my understanding. So as long as that is true.
And is that, and that the application would be more specific, so, I mean, if. Depending on if someone made a motion to accept this or recommend acceptance, the city council, they could make a, a. A, a recommendation that it's reviewed by staff and that that's provided to the city council and it's in compliance with what was.
With, with the ordinance that was.
Ordinance that was passed, right, so that's a convention that we could make on whichever way we go with the motion, right?
There is a boundary description on the plaque that was. At the top.
Okay.
So that was.
So, so that would just be.
What was our?
Right, so that, that's, I mean, we could move forward and, and approve or deny based on what we have. And have staff review that and provide it to the city council or highlight it to the city council so they know. Maybe a little better understanding of what they're looking at, so, uh, any other, any other questions for the petitioner? We have them up. Okay, thank you. We now have a motion to. Open a public hearing, we have a second, second, I'll favor say aye. We are now in public hearing. Record, we did have some public.
I want to tell Bowling Bro. I love you, I really do, Jeff. But you're irritating the hell out of me. So, anyway, um, thank you guys, I'm sorry to, to get hot, it's frustrating.
When you were, when you were here before, there was some. During the public hearing, there's concern about water and springs and all that. Any progress or any, any, not progress, but any?
So my understanding is that all gets addressed during the subdivision process. We've had the geotech guys go in and do their testing and, and. Yeah, it's all gonna, I think we're just gonna have to build above ground, we have to build up, no basins. So, and, and then I think it's fine.
He does have a detention basin as well.
And it's an oversized detention basin, so it accommodates future growth. Yeah, and, and that'll be, yes, that'll be rerouted in the plan just.
Okay, motion closing, uh, public hearing. Second my chat, all in favor say aye. We are now closed public hearing, uh, open for discussion or motions. I think it works out quite well if they can get that all the way through to Pleasant View Drive, it, it's an unknown right now.
Yes, I agree.
It, it'll work out better then, but we don't think it'll happen for twenty years, so is that a showstopper though? I mean, I think we all like that, but. Doesn't mean it's a showstopper, right?
And can I just clarify, the hammerhead turnaround complies with our public work standards and the fire district was okay with that?
Yeah.
Versus a, a bowl at the end of the road.
Yeah, when we talked about it in DRC, um, Tyson was Tyson and the fire marshal were. Tyson was, Tyson and the fire marshal were.
I, I have a kind of question along those lines, so. Not that we're voting on, anyway, if he's not able to put in one or two lots, does the road still go that length? Or then the road shortens and then just.
Well, but then.
But the hammerhead will still.
He'll have to.
With your property.
Yeah, he'll, he'll have to at least on the plop or the. No.
No, no, I'm just curious.
But if it goes away, then he'll have to still present his, his layout to the.
I was just curious.
So, et cetera. A good point. Perhaps a point in his favor, if you maintain that agricultural section to the north, sooner or later you'll, someone will want to develop, one of your kids is gonna develop that. Then you'd have to work on more ingressy grass, you know, I, it won't disappear, the problem doesn't disappear. Where, I, I think you're gonna have to look at that eventually.
Is there limitations for this road to go all the way to? Is there another landowner, I'm trying to remember.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Which is, at least it's nice that it has the potential to connect up.
Yeah.
Did you say the other landowner wants to develop?
They, they do eventually, I have first right of refusal to purchase that property if they ever sell it.
Uh huh.
And it is my goal in purchasing.
Oh.
So.
Okay, any other comments, questions, anybody would like to make motion?
I'm just waiting to approve this motion.
I'm waiting Sean. I think there's a few comments that people would like to have, uh, add alongs, can you, or staff review.
Okay. I will make a motion that we recommend. Approval of the rezone from A two and RE twenty to A two and LSFR. Um, located approximately four seventy-five west Pleasantview Drive. Uh, that comes with the, the stipulation that the rezone conforms with the legal description that was approved. In the ordinance presented to the city council, the, or the ordinance that the city council approved. Uh, for this property. And I will leave my motion there and welcome the amendments to it.
We have a motion on the table with, uh, amendments, do you, did you guys get that written down, okay? As so stated, do we have a second?
Before we second, just acknowledge that the plan that's presented tonight is not part of an approval because it's not part of our discussion. Just the rezone. I motion to second.
We have a second, uh, clarification that is for the, uh, recommendation of the approval. Um, but. Approval for the.
Rezone.
Rezone.
Yes.
Yes, I keep thinking back to the other one we just did, it's general plan. Okay, any discussion on the amendment on the table? Okay, we'll go ahead, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you very much, uh, we will get to. Ask you to maybe get with staff, that might be the first start, let's get with them. I think you'll, you'll see that we ask a lot of questions up here because we're all trying to definitely understand as we're going, but we're trying to make the right choice. I like the fact we moved to this new layout design, so I know it took a little bit longer, but I think it fit. Better for the long term and it gives us a lot more options as a city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, couple things we have, uh, before we adjourn, just some, we wanna double check, is there any? Uh, items from commission that we need to review tonight? Uh, upcoming dates, our next one is.
May first.
May first, so. May day, just remember that's coming quick, I'm not sure if we'll have a big agenda, you'll have a handful to try to get it done between now and then, or.
Nothing major.
Okay, we like no majors.
If I dare say that.
I'm, I'm going to bring up a question, I guess, uh, and I don't know if we can ask. Um, Sarah to chime in or, and or the, um, staff, or maybe this is something to look at, I, one of my questions I raised for staff and. I do appreciate getting the packets earlier, that's been nice to give us a little bit of time to digest. Uh, I actually called Tammy myself, when I went through the LSFR for both of these. It really got me thinking and, and maybe this is something, but I don't know if we have to bring it back up to a public hearing, I think we can discuss for a minute. Since we're still here in a public forum. I thought that I remembered we had a specific size requirement, so if we're gonna do as, the S, LSFR. And we said it had to be at least a minimum size. And we couldn't find that anywhere in the requirement, so I didn't know if I was dreaming, that I thought it had to have a certain.
There was some discussion and I went back and listened to both the planning commission meeting and the city council meeting, there was just. Discussion in planning commission meeting very briefly about doing some kind of a minimum size requirement for the development. And then it was kind of decided that, um. Keep it as is, so that there's a potential of using it in, you know, little random places.
And I guess that's the part that, that scares me. That's right, and, and I wonder if we need to do both. Right, and that scares me.
That, that, not so much the minimum size. The maximum is we have pockets of, you know, places in, in the city that have.
And I, and I guess I'm the other way, I'm, I guess I look at it the other way and I'm like, I think we would, I would, no, I'd rather. I would rather have not a huge big fifty acres, but I, but don't we wanna at least say you have to have at least two or three acres? Because what's to say that someone has, you know, three fourths of acre and all of a sudden you got boom, 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 you know? You, it, it, hey, I got this little lot right next to, you know? And so I'm just wondering, I just wondered, would people be interested in having that as a discussion or a public hearing and possibly add? I, I thought we had where there had to be a, a minimum, a minimum, uh, requirement for. If they wanna use, it had to have at least two acres or three acres.
And like.
Um, recent zoning that we created, that, that's kind of a lot of having a maximum area or a minimum area. Because the, you know, the last thing at least that I want is if you have the, uh, development that somebody next door says, oh, that's cool, I want one too. And then, oh, that's what I want to do, and then you just have it.
Well, I mean, let's just use the, I got a lot next to me and I wasn't thinking that's now, but you know, it's point seven two, so it can maybe fit. Three of these right next door, if someone comes in, wipes out the little farmhouse and.
At your discretion.
But, but we also, we don't have to, but we're all not gonna be on here ten years from now or fifteen, twenty years from now. But we could give guidelines of, hey, here's, oh, they look at the ordinance, it says, they can change it too. Right.
But what's your general plan, what, this consensus and have those active discussions all the time?
I guess to me, otherwise we're gonna see a lot of spot zoning there. If we don't have some minimum, so my, my thought would be. Do we, do we have staff bring something, we view this as possibly, you know, what do other cities do, what's kind of, what is a standard out there? I would like to see some minimum and I'd like to see a maximum, you know, I'd like to see something on there. Andy, why would you want a, a point seven acre wasteland? No, they, they've got a house already on, like when they're wiping out, put three houses on there.
We have things like, you know, about timelines, things like that, so you don't have the whole. Like, you know.
Right. So it matches the neighborhood, otherwise you'd have lots, houses that are already twenties, then all of a sudden you got three little fatty lots.
But sometimes you have scenarios that aren't really in a neighborhood, like for instance. I have an acre, I, I'm on two acres, one of my acres is just sitting, but I have golf course around, so. It wouldn't, it's a long, there we go.
I'm still waiting for your higher ups.
Sometimes there are.
I would like to recommend that staff bring that back, at least we can discuss as a group and make that an agenda item, it's not a rush, but I think that's something that we should. At least open up, have a discussion, I can't remember why we didn't do that when we put this through, but I'd like to hear some people's thoughts. What's that? Yes, we've done that with storage units, mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, any other items from the commission, staff, any items? Sarah, any thoughts that you would like to throw in, parting thoughts before we move our way?
It's called, uh, project, I don't know, we're going to, let me say, finalize all the financials of the money that we have. But, yeah, um, honey, as we can, founder day, we're gonna be like, if you want to help out at this, I mean, please let. You know, and, and at the breakfast too, that would be great. And what color shirt you want?
Orange.
I have an orange, yeah, I'm green.
So gentlemen.
The mom's parcel for green.
Did we adjourn?
Hey, we just got motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.